Introduce yourself, please. Alfred.
We're standing today just the week before the Jewish New Year called Rosh Hashanah. Now, the Rosh Hashanah holiday is not just a Jewish holiday, but it actually commemorates the first human beings of creation, the anniversary of the creation of Adam and Eve.
All right.
Along with that, which is all of us, descendants of Adam and Eve, God gave a list of different laws that were later conveyed through Moses at Mount Sinai to each one of us. The seven Ohad laws include the prohibition of adultery, blasphemy, murder, theft, sexual immorality, eating the limb of a living animal, and finally, the one of establishing a legal system, something this very council was elected to do, to promote justice, fairness, and respect for others in our beautiful city. Let's take this opportunity to turn to Almighty God in prayer that our elected council members be imbued with wisdom, understanding, and knowledge to make the correct decisions to allow our community to continue to serve as a beacon of life and a role model to all cities across the state, country, and universe. May we soon enter into an era of peace and harmony for all mankind in the world, and may we then merit the time when all humanity will be involved in the ultimate pursuit of truth and knowledge, the knowledge of God within creation. In the words of the prophet Isaiah, "For the world be filled with the knowledge of God as the waters cover the sea." I would say amen.
Amen. Thank you. The pledge allegiance on three, one, two. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay, very good. Everybody's here tonight. People, the public is here. I can see one. Okay. I have to make a statement that government is not a business. A business grows, has more people working for it, and it brings in more money, but that's not what a government's supposed to do. Government's supposed to be lean and mean and like. The less they take away from the people, the more the people have for themselves. So, tonight, we're talking about borrowing some money to put it in reserve just in case something happens, like another storm. But we're going to restrict the use of that so we don't get carried away and thrown away. So, thanks for coming, and we go on to a public comment. And Mayor, I mean, Attorney, please.
At this time, if you are here for any of the zoning items or the public hearings on the item, we'd ask that you refrain from speaking at this time and wait till those items are called. If you're here for one of the zoning items, you will be sworn in and give testimony at that time. Thank you.
Okay, any public comment? Seeing none. Number eight, A zoning. May the clerk read this.
This is the first reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs. To amend the Astero Bay Commercial Plan Development/Residential Plan Development, initialums CPD/RPD, to increase the RPD boundary by 5.3 plus or minus acres, remove the northeastern preserve consisting of 0.62 plus or minus acres, and increase the mangrove preserve area from 3.51 acres to 3.64 acres. Remove the ALF/ILF/CCRC Development Option, Option One. Add townhomes and two family-attached homes to the schedule of uses within the RPD. Add RPD development regulations for townhomes and two family-attached homes. Add a trip conversion matrix to allow the multifamily units to be converted to other residential types with no increased DPM peak hour trip generation. Modify Deviation Eight and Deviation Thirteen to address changes in building layout and removal of preserved acreage. Add six new deviations and modify the master concept plan to provide for these changes and provide for an effective date.
Motion to move to second reading.
Second.
If you would like, staff can give you a basic introduction, but at this time, is there any members of the public who wish to provide any testimony on this item? Can you see none? Close the public hearing.
Offer a vote, please.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. It's a nice project. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Offer a roll call.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Okay, now, we have appointment to the festivals or whatever. That's Laura Carr. Would you like to bring that in?
Yes, we have a young woman who is applying to be on the Special Events Committee. I spoke with her this afternoon, and she's very excited. So, I don't know what else you want me to say. I don't know if she's here, but I don't see her. Because I know everybody using the lines. I don't know which one.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Okay, now, we've got Art in Public Places. Nigel, would you bring this in?
Yes, sir. We've got two applicants. They submitted to Nicole, and they're both residents and familiar with what we do, so excited to have that. And I think we're going to hold up on my ask for taking the number of members of Art in Public Places down from eleven to seven. Do we do that now, or?
What I would suggest is that Councilmember Folic had talked to me that the board wishes to go back to their original number just because of quorum and participation, and this adding these folks would allow them to be a full-member board. He would need to come back with an agenda item and a resolution to actually change the membership again, but I think he wanted to make council aware of his desire to bring that back.
I agree.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Okay, now, we've got the second reading of docs and shorelines. We've got a presentation by the staff.
I'll read the title into the record. This is a second reading of an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, amending the Bonita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Seven, Environment, Natural Resources, and Marine Facilities, Structures, and Equipment, Article Twelve, Doc, and Shoreline Structures, and Chapter Nine, Definitions, Providing for Conflicts of Law, Severability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors, and Modifications That May Arise from Consideration at Public Hearing and an Effective Date.
Presentation. Do we want comments first? How about we have comments for public comments? And then she can react to your statements.
Good evening. For the record, Ben Nelson with Nelson Marine Construction. My address is 10900 East Terry Street, Bonita Springs. First of all, I want to thank staff for their hard work on this ordinance. It took a while there. We've been discussing it with them for quite some time on the need for some type of this. We've always been in agreement on that, and what they put together and what you have before you today, I think, is a really good ordinance. I want to thank John and Laura for that in applying the two different methodologies to the straightaways on canals and then putting the other methodology onto the ends of the canals ended up perfect. So, and if it's not perfect, John and I are going to fix it, right, John and Laura? I think it's a really good thing. It's going to protect everybody's rights for repair and access to their properties. I think it's probably one of the best ordinances that I've seen comparing it to Collier County and Naples and every place else.
That's.
Well done on their part, and I'll be available in the audience if you guys get any questions.
I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, John Dahmer received an email from Mr. Mazurkowitz, who stated he was unable to make the meeting this evening, but he wished John to express his statement in an email that he... I'll let John.
Boy. First question is, if there's a problem, we can amend this? Everything's amendable, right?
Everything is.
We can always make a change.
Okay.
So, good evening. Oh, good, I'm glad you printed that out. "John, thanks for the latest draft of the ordinance. Our doc builders have reviewed it, and they like the new draft better than the original one that was introduced. Please share with the mayor and council. The SWF MIA supports the latest draft with the five-foot and 10-foot setbacks along with 45-degree setbacks for corner and canal lots. I am not planning on attending tonight's final public meeting unless you think I should. Thanks for your willingness to work with the industry." And that was from Mr. Mazurkowitz.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say good job to Dahmer on that because, I mean, look, we have Ben Nelson's happy, and we also have, you know, Mazurkowitz happy, and John's still, you know, here happy, so, I mean, this is a win-win for everybody.
Jackie did all the work.
Jackie, Jackie's, you know.
Oh, I'm Laura, yes, sorry.
Repairian rights are a very important thing, and people really don't think about them that often, so it's good that we have something appropriate in place for when those situations do come up, that it's fair and appropriate for everybody, and I think this hybrid model, you know, showed a good adaptability from staff, and I appreciate the work on it.
Offer a vote.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Okay, now, we're talking. Who wants to introduce this borrowing?
Eleven B.
Eleven B will still need to be read out loud.
"This is a second reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of interim borrowing not to exceed $2 million in principal amount of a debt obligation to finance continuing governmental operations, providing for a covenant to budget and appropriate legally available non-add valorem revenues to pay the principal of and interest on the debt obligation, providing for the rights of the holder of such note, providing severability, and providing for an effective date."
Okay, I'd like to put a covenant on this that before we touch this money, spend any of it, it comes back to the city council for a vote. Have a second on that?
It would anyway, but I'll second it.
It would?
Yeah.
No, it would not.
It would not?
I was going to say, who's running a trial?
It doesn't make sense to do that. I mean, you...
So, you do have, I would ask please to come forward, but you do have financial policies and procedures, and there are, this is only able to be used for the operating budget, which is administered by your staff. So, if there's an appropriation above $50,000, that does come to council. If there's a contract above $50,000, that comes to council. So, that would be an additional restriction. That is a policy call. That would be a decision of council whether you wish to do that on other expenses that would be in a normal operating budget that staff would normally administer through the financial policies that we have. But I like.
I still want the restriction. It has to come back before you touch this money.
So, just to clarify, the motion is to approve the loan with the stipulation?
No.
Can we separate the two and do, approve the loan and then do the mayor's so we can have two votes?
That if the mayor's not moving to approve it, then that would be the way to, that would be the way to do it. There should be a motion to approve it, and then there can be a motion to amend that approval, subject to the condition that any withdrawal on the loan comes back to the council.
Okay, make the motion.
Motion to approve the loan.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Didn't mean to. Change my vote real quick. I didn't mean to vote.
If your vote was incorrect, you can notice it, note it now.
Okay, change, change.
Okay, now, I'd like to put a...
A condition on it that before the money can be expended, it would have to come back to the...
We have other monies. We, because if we spend it, we've got 10%, and that's too much. We just didn't have any. The taxpayer has to pay this.
Vice Mayor, do you renew your second?
No.
No, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and this might clear it up. I feel the same way you do about the money, but the way that we have it set up and how the budget is going to operate, essentially, unless they go over a set amount, which is the 50,000, they're expected to...
We don't need this money, number one. It was just an absolute emergency, and we can vote, we can always vote to let them spend it, okay? And what they spend is 10% on the dollar.
Right. You're not understanding that, that once the money is there, it's in the operations budget, and then if something has to come up, they have to come to us, the way it is right now. So, it's already in there.
No, they don't, not for 50,000.
Over 50,000, 50 and over.
I don't want, I want zero, zero, zero. They don't...
Well, that's micromanaging.
Is there, just to clarify, is there a second to the motion to add the condition?
Go ahead and spend every butt, every money you can, get your hands on it. Go ahead. We don't need this.
I trust our staff.
Ditto.
I ditto. No second?
No second.
Who are... Okay, well, go get your 2 million, and we're going to put it in the bank at 5%, right? Hopefully.
It will be in the reserves. It will be in savings. As a courtesy, if there was a need to spend it, staff will notify it. It's unlikely to be used. It would be in a state of emergency, and the threshold is the 50,000. So, if there is a need, we will send an email, we will provide phone calls, and we'll announce in the following meeting that the money was spent, so you have an accounting of it.
All right, thank you.
Derek.
Next item, sorry. Next item is, I'm asking for the approval of 13 resolutions of necessity to move forward with possibly condemning and making offers on several pieces of property along the BG Mine Settlement Agreement to get us access to the city's planned future park that was part of the settlement. I'm also asking for a approval of a settlement implementation agreement that provides for some additional donations of land right-of-way drainage and terms with respect to the acquisition. So, if you recall, the terms of our settlement is, it is the requirement of BG Mine to provide us access. We have determined that we need actual fee title ownership to the property. It was part of the settlement and anticipated that if there was a possibility, if we could not acquire the property voluntarily, that we may need to condemn an interest necessary to get us the access we need to the park. We are going to be, that will be paid through an escrow account by BG Mine, and we are here today to ask for approval of the resolutions necessary for begin that process. So, after those resolutions are approved, we will make offers to the property owners to try to cement agreements to acquire the land. If necessary, we'll move forward condemnation, and it'll be requirement of BG Mine to make sure there's adequate funds necessary for the city to move forward on those.
Motion to approve.
Question with that. Does the condemnation, is that from, is the city doing the condemnation if it comes down to that?
If it comes down to it, yes, the city would move forward condemnation.
Okay, so hypothetically, if the city didn't go forward with condemnation, we've already made the deal, so then what?
We wouldn't have access to the park.
Really? We can't, I mean, there's not another way that we could get in there? There's no other way to do it than this?
We're, the, we're trying to acquire the properties voluntarily. Some properties, we may not be able to get a hold of the parcels. There's been negotiations going on by BG Mine to acquire some of those properties. We're also working on two agreements with Lee County and Lee County Schools to donate some of their property as well, but at the end of the day, we need a complete length, the entire length, to make it, to make it happen.
And the city's the only one that can condemn a property?
The city is the only one that's a party of the, to the agreement that can condemn a property.
Right, that's what, but I was saying that the BG Mines should have the ability as well, wouldn't they? Or well...
No, they don't. Their fun, their funding, all of our, including all of our legal expenses, everything up to this point has been funded by BG Mine.
There's no way around it. I just don't like the, I don't like the optics of us condemning things, period. I just don't like it, and, I mean, obviously, we go through the process trying to make offers, and if somebody ain't going to sell the firm, they're not going to sell the firm. We've got to move forward, but, obviously, I don't like the idea of, you know, the sound of condemnation of land.
At the end of the day, what was determined is that the, there is an easement that runs the, almost the entire length of the property, but that is for the benefit only of the property owners along there. Even though the city will become a property owner along that easement, that is, does not grant access to the public. So, in order for the public to have access, we're going to need to go forward and acquire the actual title to the property. Now, construction, elements beyond that, we may be able to partner with Lee County and others to get access, because also, this would be the only access to Larry Keiker Preserve as well. So, there's other opportunities in the long run, but we're controlling this process. It was very important, if you recall, to the city at the time of the settlement, that this was a road that we controlled, not the county, not anyone else, and so that's part of the reason why condemnation...
That's the best...
Always left on the table.
That's the best argument, is that we don't want the county to do it, because for people listening who remember this, that the real, part of the deal with why we didn't want to get into letting the county own that was because we wouldn't control our own fate on a north-south route between Collier and Astero, which they've been trying to do since the beginning of time. So, by keeping it, we negated that from happening. So, of all the arguments we've made, that's the best one for me. All right, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Yes.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Okay, Cafe Life.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We received a letter from the Cafe of Life requesting the ability for them to add to the Lightner Neighborhood Park a 16-by-12 pavilion gazebo at their cost. We do have an agreement with the Cafe of Life, but any capital improvements requires the approval of council. If you wish us to work with them on that, we would need that as a formal direction, and then we'd work with Derek whether we need an addendum to the contract or not, and then we'd work through the financial process of allowing them to pull permits and work on the gazebo.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? Are they going to maintain this and...
Yes, that was my understanding, and that could be a part of any addendum we bring to the court.
We run an addendum. Right now, they have control of a certain amount of that park.
We have a contract with them for the control of the building and maintenance of the building as well.
Yeah, the contract provides that they rent, they manage a portion of the park, and they keep the upkeep on it. We wanted to make sure that we got approval from the council first before renegotiating the terms or any other lease or anything like that. So, as we start to get into the details of it, we'll determine whether or not the lease needs to be amended to reflect that.
Okay.
And it does call for the capital improvements would have to go through council for approval first.
Offer a vote.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Financial report?
Yes, Lisa could come forward.
And Lisa, you're going to follow up with the draft with the July financial, then?
Yes, yes, I sure will. Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here tonight to review the financial report. This is our July financial report. We do show you consistent graphics so that we can clearly identify trends. This is our general fund revenue as of July 31st. It is, it has a different significant components of our revenue. You'll see the add valorem taxes has come down quite a bit. We collect a lot of that at the beginning of our fiscal year, and the remainder of our revenue types are collected monthly or quarterly over the remainder of the fiscal year. So, this is a very healthy proportion of the different types of operating, regular operating revenues that we have. General fund revenue. This graph shows...
This graph shows fiscal year-to-date, current fiscal year-to-date as compared to prior fiscal year-to-date. Again, this is our general fund regular recurring operating revenue. And as you can see, our trends are, are outstanding compared from year to year. Good trends to have when you're looking at your regular operating revenue. General fund expenditures, fiscal year-to-date as compared to the prior fiscal year-to-date. Now, this one is not quite so optimistic because we, as, along with the rest of the nation, are being impacted by inflationary trends. We do see those in our regular recurring operating. And as we've seen, hopefully, some of our revenues will help us provide for that. And we do have other measures. We're monitoring those. But that is something that's not just isolated to the city. Everyone's feeling that. Restricted revenues, these are our significant restricted revenues. They're restricted as to use by the enabling legislation. For example, our first item there is our building permit fees. Those are assessed for building permits that are, that are pulled at our community development department. And they're restricted for operation of the building department only. And the remainder of the items are the same way. The enabling legislation is enacted just to provide a certain function. As you can see, building permit fees have actually had a few good months. John has indicated in community development that we're not sure that that's going to continue. We are watching this particular fund because we, we do know that we're, we're spending down an accumulation that we have. And when we get close enough to that, we're getting pretty close. We'll be coming back to you all and talking about reshaping them. Because by law, you are, we're allowed to collect enough revenue to operate. And that's a function that it has, have to continue operating. So we set those fees at a level that allows us to operate. Stormwater management fees, those are in line with the prior year. Our impact fees, both our park and our road are for acquisition and construction of new facilities or additional facilities to an existing structure. Again, these are consistent with what we're seeing in all of our area. New construction permits are just not coming in at the level they did last year. And that's an industry-wide trend that we're seeing. State shared revenue, that is fairly consistent. And local option gas tax, fairly consistent with prior year. In times, it's amazing when you hear that the fuel, cost of fuel goes up, people think, oh, your taxes go up. But people conserve more. As you think about, you think about the number of trips, as we all do. So consumer behavior plays heavily into all these. Cash balances, we show you our significant cash balances for three fiscal years so that we can properly identify when we're accumulating funds. A lot of our funds that we accumulate, we accumulate for capital projects. We attempt to pay as you go for a lot of our capital infrastructure needs. So you'll see these monies being accumulated. And then when they actually decline over time, that's when we're utilizing these. Mostly, most of these are for, as I've indicated, capital improvements. Other than the general fund unassigned, actually, we do use our general fund for capital improvements as well. Our surplus, we use that for that. But you'll see those move over time. And then these are restricted, park impact fees, stormwater, building fees, and our, our other funds, which are utilized for, for debt service. We, we know, you all are probably aware, a lot of local media and national media have focused on some, some concerns that FEMA representatives are expressing. We wanted to let you all know what we've been advised of. There is a FEMA advisory that FEMA has implemented, what they've termed immediate needs funding until, and these are their terminology, until the disaster reserve fund is replenished. It's our understanding from literature that FEMA has given us that they have done this numerous times in the past. What that means to the city and to other people who are participating and moving, because we're moving through the FEMA process with respect to Ian's damages. There'll be no new obligations unless it's to do with life-saving or life-sustaining activities. So the other, all other obligations are paused. And the term obligation is what FEMA uses to, to basically say, when they agree, you've moved forward, you've moved enough through the reimbursement process where they agree, in general terms, they owe you the money. They're going to give it to you. It's pretty much when they obligate it, they're basically have a liability on their books. So this just means that they're going to pause that. And again, the, the literature they've given us says that this is something they've done before. It's a cash flow issue, I believe. What we're doing here is the city is working closely with our FEMA consultant so that they can advocate on our behalf to make sure that our reimbursements for Hurricane Ian's move through the process. The literature that we received for FEMA, we can still put all of our projects in the process. They just will be paused at the point just before obligation. And we'll keep you all updated when we know. So that's the financial report.
What, what funds are not obligated?
Well, how the FEMA process works and.
Not, not necessarily FEMA, but in general, we have the ad valorem tax. We have the state tax, the sales tax, is that encumbered into something like? The building fees, the park fees all go to, the road fees got to go to the different things. What, how many areas are not restricted or?
Well, all of our general fund revenue is not restricted. How it does become obligated to be spent, and as it's spent, is through your, through your budget. Through your budget. You budget to spend so much of your general fund revenue.
What goes into the general fund revenue?
Excuse me?
What goes into the general fund revenue?
Basically, all of our unrestricted, it's ad valorem taxes, real estate taxes, if you will, sales taxes. Let's see, communication services tax, we have half-cent sales tax. Those are our primary ones. Operating, our planning and zoning fees, there's some collected in there, some code enforcement fines, any kind of things that we assess at a local level, those go into our general operating.
It's, it's not just the ad valorem?
No, it's not. And in fact, that only makes up about 40%, as we were just looking at. I think about 47%. And that will actually continue to go down as we move forward. To the end of the fiscal year.
Any questions?
Any more questions?
Yes.
Lisa, if I may, the interest and other earnings, 1.1 million dollar jump. Can you just elaborate on that? Or are you just a genius?
No, no, we, we at the city, consistent with Florida statutes, we invest our funds very conservatively. There's a handful of investment vehicles that the city and a lot of other municipalities are allowed to use that are conservative, so we can use for our cash flow. We are just the ti- I think that's a, it's a combination of a lot of things. Interest rates have gone up. I mean, we, we, like everyone else, if you look at your savings account, for years there, you were getting next to nothing. It's just a matter of the cost of borrowing go up, go, is going up. And the cost of interest that they're paying you for your funds is going up. And that's a nationwide thing.
Are we using some of these short-term vehicles, like short-term treasuries?
We're using a governmental, well, actually, our, our, our savings account, our checking account pays us for our surplus funds as well. We have a fee, but then we also using a local government pool that's backed by the state.
So where we put, where we put our money is restricted?
Excuse me?
Where we put our extra money is restricted?
Well, all of them, yes. We, we try to put all of our additional funds in there because it does, typically, it will earn a little more than our, our general checking account. But our checking account does earn as well, too. We have a governmental surplus checking.
What is that rate, our checking?
I'd, I'd have to check to be sure. It, it has been, it's been trending upwards, so just like the numbers are. And, and what we, you know, we do hope, things move up and things move down with, with respect to interest rates. As you can see, this has been moving up. So this is kind of helping us with some of the inflationary trends and other things we have. We try not to, as governmental entity, we try not to count on interest rates to remain high to pay, you know, to pay, to pay our bills. Because if it goes down, then, you know, we wouldn't be able to, to do all the things that we have in our budget. So we do budget relatively conservatively for our interest rates.
When do we pick another bank?
I'd have to check on when that, those bid documents expire. I'm not, not sure. Exactly.
I know, I know banks that pay 5%.
Yes.
And I've got accounts at the other bank that doesn't pay hardly anything.
Well, we do, as a, as a Florida municipality, we are limited to the type of bank that we can use. They just have to be collateralized. They have to participate. Like the Florida statutes, they have a collateralized pool that we only select banks that are in that because therefore it gives us something similar to FDIC for governmental entities. The state of Florida financially manages that pool of banks and institutions who's on that list. So we select from there, consistent with Florida statutes.
Things have changed a lot since we picked our current bank. And I certainly would like to investigate what other banks are offering at this time.
Our bid documents are limited in timeframe, so we'll, we'll check on that.
Okay, thank you.
And you're also limited by the ratings for the banks? The bank ratings, how they're rated every year?
Yes, 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 of course, of course.
So there may be people out there paying more interest, but their ratings aren't assigned?
Yes, and yes. And all that has to be taken into account.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome. Good questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Your draft budget.
Okay. So we thought we'd move right into the next segment for tonight. We are going to do your budget update for your 2023, 2024 budget. That will start, our fiscal year ends 9:30, and it'll start October 1st of 2023. We now have all of our state revenue projections in. We talk each year, the state economists work just diligently to keep their pulse on where they think our major revenues that they pass on to us, the collection rates, they project those for us. Our last two that we received were communication services tax and the local option gas tax. And we're happy to say, all of those have come out from the state in line with what you have in your budget, which is a good thing. That means, and we based ours on historic trends and other things that we were watching. You know, I talk a lot about, they do state revenue estimating conferences. And we, we watch those and we try to look at what they're saying as we move through the year. So we get to the end of the year, we can budget properly. Hurricane Ian impact on 2023 real estate taxable values. Our truth and mileage notices, TRIM, an acronym a lot of people familiar with, were mailed on August 24th. This is the property owner's very first look at their value from January 2023. And as we all know, Ian impacted our area very end of September 2022. This notice is not a tax bill. It's informational only. The tax bills will be mailed out in November. We have been getting a lot of calls here. We do every year. It's amazing. We, of course, you know, I assist them, talk them through the process and forward them to the property appraiser if they have inquiries about the value that has been assessed by his office. So we are sure he is being inundated with calls this year, our property appraiser, he being our property appraiser. The timeline for the 2023 real estate taxable values. The gathering of the previously unreported damage data, which we have been told is still out there, is continuing. It's anticipated to continue up until when the tax bills are received and possibly beyond that into 2024 during the value adjustment board process. Reason being, we've talked about this before, that the impact of Ian, you know, the property appraiser has looked at every, every building, every piece of land, but he can't see what's inside the structures. So the people need to communicate with him and let them know, is it inhabitable? Is it not? That sort of thing. And, and he has, the main, the last point here is, is one of the things to really note. Parcel taxable value will include the value of the land. A gentleman called here this week and he, he no longer has his home that's on a parcel down on one of our back bays. And he was inquiring about the value that he was being taxed on. And I, I did not make any, it's the property appraiser to tell him, but I'm rela- we sent him on to there, but I'm relatively certain that's the value that they assessed to the land. And again, that's between him and the property appraiser to work out. If anyone should feel that it's not appropriate, they communicate with them and he works it out with them. And there's actually a legal process as well that they can move through if they need to.
Now, Lisa.
Yes, sir.
If the property value is assessed on the, what, the 1st of the year?
January 2023 is what we're dealing with now.
Okay. So let's say 24, if it's still not livable, is that value set for the whole year? You don't, you can't answer that, I suppose.
Yes, I think I can. I think I can. So what we're looking at right now is January 2023. It's a snapshot in time, just like our bank accounts, that we see how much we have. That's the amount we have on that day in that bank account. January 2024, there will be a new value. And that value doesn't change except for on, set on January each year. The bills are sent out, preliminary notice in August, and then the invoices in November. But the value itself is based on January. It can only be transactions and status as of January. What the property appraiser has still been asking people to do is to continue to go to their website. There's a link right there. Send them an email if you feel your property as of January 2024 is not inhabitable. If there's something you feel about the interior structure or the exterior that they need to know in order to properly value it, they want your information.
Okay, do you think that if you moved in, if it's livable in February, then they adjust the tax? Or they're going to stay with the January?
My understanding of Florida statutes is no. It's, it's a snapshot in time. Just for example, if you were purchase a home or sell a home, if, you know, if, if you buy it in February, the guy before you would have paid it. I mean, you, through your closing, you pay a proportionate share of it, but something similar to that. So it's a snapshot in time. It's whoever's on that tax roll and whatever the value and the structure and everything as of January.
Mr. Mayor, so for instance, if on January 5th. The assessment was done that a property was worth $400,000.
On the 5th?
Any day in January. Just pick a day in January.
But the 1st is a holiday, so it won't be the 1st. Maybe.
Let's just use January for the hypothetical here. And in March, the property is sold for twice that value. That value will not show up on the tax rolls, even though the appraiser hasn't prepared them yet, until the following year.
Yes, exactly.
That, that sale will not be recognized.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, because I don't think my building's going to be livable by January.
Yes. So they really would like anyone to continue to go in and put in some data as things are updated. That really helps them so that they can get accurate information out on the preliminary notice. So our next slide has to do with 2022 city property tax refunds for Hurricane Ian. As we've talked about before, Florida statutes adopted a rule that if your property was demolished or uninhabitable, that you could apply for a refund from the time Ian hit, which near the end of September, to the end of December, which you had already paid for, should have already paid for. And our city number has come in from the tax collector at roughly about 126,000. What that means is maybe a lot of people didn't know about the ability, in my opinion. It might have, it might be lower than anticipated because some people weren't aware of it. And we only had, they had a tight timeframe to apply, April. And so that's the amount of money that we have paid, the city has paid in refunds for those property owners. The Florida Department of Revenue has come through again, and they have provided an emergency rule to offset the reduction of the revenue for 2022 tax refunds. That means that ourselves and every other tax authority that's on your tax bill that had to pay for these refunds can apply to participate and request reimbursement from the state. So we are doing that.
That was good to me.
It does, I know. I mean, with the Ian, the impacts we've had from Hurricane Ian, we have really, the state has really stepped up to make sure, help us get some cash flow. Timelines, 2023 real estate taxable values. Did I do do that? Did I go backwards? Excuse me, I apologize. I went backwards. Okay. So what we're going to do now is we're going to talk about the budget changes that have happened and been implemented subsequent, subsequent to your last meeting. You gave us some changes, that some changes were approved at the last meeting. We're going to highlight those for you. We're going to give you a summary of all the changes from the first draft in July until today's date. We were directed at the last meeting to add a capital improvement project. You can see it listed here. It is being added. It's going to be funded. It is being added, it's going to be funded by the general fund, it's being added at this point in this preliminary budget in a, in an outer year. We wanted to show you a summary of proposed budget changes. Again, this is from your initial draft in July until today's date. We have them separated, subtotaled if you will, by general fund, your regular recurring operating funds and your special revenue, because those are the two areas that have been impacted by your changes. You can see there was an increase in avalarum revenue in the general fund, there was an increase in operating expenses and an increase in some capital funding transfers. And that gave us an impact on, for, because it's general fund, regular recurring operating, that will be your impact on your unassigned fund balance. Our next slide will show you where we think you are right now on that estimate. Special revenue, this is the increase in avalarum taxable revenue. This is your portion for downtown. This is your downtown debt service that you allocate to pay for the improvements that we did in the downtown area. Projection of unassigned fund balance as of September thirtieth, 2024. You can see our estimate that was presented in the initial budget there. And then the impact of the proposed budget changes, that's the differences, the net differences of all the changes that we've had. And this is your new estimate for your unassigned fund balance, at roughly about 3.8 million. The big note there, big, big note, as you know, we're standing here today, we're trying to project forward to September thirtieth, 2024. These numbers will be changed for actual collections and actual expenditures. And we actually adjust them as well when we hit our audit period. In our annual budget, you have projections, you have estimates, when we have actual numbers, we make sure we adjust that and we let you know and update you about the changes on that. The remaining budget calendar, we have our tentative budget hearing next Tuesday, September twelfth at 5:30. That will be your, that'll be a millage rate vote. That's your first of two public hearings that you have to have by Florida statutes. And then Wednesday, September twentieth at 5:30, that's a regular council meeting that we've moved from the day to the nighttime. So at 5:30, we will have our public hearing as required by Florida statutes. We will take our final millage rate vote. And then when that concludes, we will move on to your regular city council meeting.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay.
Sounds really good to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Lisa?
Arlene, based upon what we've seen, is there any impact on the budget as, as far as you can tell from the hurricane last week? In terms of damage that we're going to have to address and so forth in the twenty-three, but, twenty-three, twenty-four budget?
We did have some localized flooding on some, some, in county roads as well as city roads. We did some minor looks as, as of right now, I think there's going to be some further discussion and, and as far as structures, one of the reasons why we've asked you to continue the local state of emergency is I understand that we, under an initial review of the properties, we had 23 affected properties, six with some minor damage. We did have a commercial property that had a water intrusion, the remaining were residential. So in, in case there's an opportunity for funding, it's, it's good to keep that in place. I think as Matt looks at the other local roads, if there's other projects that come up from the, from looking at them, that's something for further discussions in a CIP.
Matt, at Melanie, Melanie, that road is half destroyed.
Oh, yeah.
Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, that road typically goes underwater anytime we have a flood high tide or, and obviously an event like this. It's, and it was under a significant amount of water with the storm.
And it hasn't been fixed from the last storm?
Oh, we're aware of that area, that, that, actually, it's been partially repaired and we have asphalt, pavement that needs to be restored. That was from Ian, but, yeah, Melanie and Harmony both unfortunately are low-lying roads on the barrier island, yeah.
Bay Drive gets all flooded. That came in from the bay, it didn't come in from the Gulf.
Yep.
The Gulf came in down by access three and four. And the Gulf, the beach is really big now, but different than it was a month ago, so. Okay, we're going to get, take care of it. Any other questions for Lisa?
No, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Some of the additional updates that I have regarding Hurricane Ian is John's department is tracking so that we have an idea of the, of the properties that were damaged under, under Ian. We have approximately 488 restoration permits. We know that's way under the number that actually had significant damage, so we'll continue outreach and help with that. We will come back with a plan, you know, for certain permits that may be acceptable to start charging the fees back on. And we probably want to give that as, as a presentation to y'all to discuss because some of the folks, it does take longer to hire roofers or cer, certain fields, so we want to make sure we're giving everyone adequate time to do that as well. We continued, as I said, there was, I appreciate everyone's help and, on the staff, even though City Hall was closed for two days, everyone was activated and working to do their initial damage assessments. We did report the, all of that information to Lee County. We were very appreciative, Lee County was immediately responsive, first thing in the morning, to Hickory Boulevard, to, to, to look, and with us on the impact to that. We were able to also relay some additional damage that happened to some of the beach accesses to them, to give them that update as well. As we said, that we did have some minor localized flooding on local roads as well, so we're going to continue to monitor that infrastructure through the process. Matt and I were able to attend a luncheon today with, that Representative Botana had in place. There was Senate President Kathleen Pasadena and Senator Jonathan Martin. We were able to express our gratitude for the 5.4 million for the golf course and did relay that the city council did invest the $90,000 in the modeling, that's so important to our vulnerable communities for modeling of flood, potential flooding. And we expressed that we would like the help of the representative again to communicate with the Water Management District on our needs for outreach when that modeling's available and monitoring as well. And Senator Pasadena was very interested in hearing Bill back, wanting to know numbers, wanting to know if people are able to move back in their home. She's also looking for feedback on the Live Local Act. Her staff's asking, you know, our communities to provide feedback on that if there's potential for amendments that, that may, maybe needed down the road. We also expressed the projects that we have placed that council approved for the HMGP program, the fact that there's local matches for those, and there might be a potential for legislative requests if some of those move up as higher priorities down the, down the process. We did let them know we would be coming back to council with a list of our legislative priorities so that you can rank those and then they'll have the ability to submit those applications coming in the fall.
Do we have a state of emergency for the last hurricane?
We do, and we're going to ask you to continue that until we've had a full assessment and any outreach to the folks who might have been affected individually, that they get whatever assistance they need.
Okay, plus we keep the other one, we've got both of them.
Correct, we need to keep the other one in place for the grant applications that we have moving forward.
Yes, Nigel.
I think I'm going to ask John this question. I hit you the last time, we're about, what, 136 or 137 parcels that were, had submitted for a demo and that number is still so low. What I'm wondering is, can we do any research and identify parcels that we know were flooded that are possibly now being, when I say sold or listed for planning purposes? There's got to be more than 150 homes that are going to be demolished.
We have, we were working today on, on matching up the numbers of houses that were damaged and unlivable during Ian and what the status of those were currently. If we're looking to, to add which ones are, are listed for sale, we could do that, it'll take a little bit of time to set the process up, but we can definitely run those numbers.
For planning purposes, that would seem to be prudent.
And, I mean, in the short term, I can count signs, but long term, I think that we could probably do a little bit better, a little more automated. So that's not a problem.
The other announcement I had, as John can stay there, is AIDA received notification regarding our CRS. So AIDA and Carly worked on retaining our class five. So we'll be able to implement that cost savings to our residents again this year.
Excuse me, CRS?
The CRS rating, we will remain it as a class five.
What is that?
She, well, she gave me notes, so.
What is CRS?
Immunity rating system.
Blood insurance.
Immunity rating system.
For flood insurance. So according to what I've been given, 245 communities are participating in this CRS program, 411 municipalities. We are one of only 55 of those that has held or has a class five rating. Last year, there were 11,056 FEMA-backed flood insurance policies in Benita Springs, which paid a total of eight million dollars in premiums and change. Our discounts through our program and what we've been able to do through our audits saved those policy holders 2.288 million dollars in last year. So a lot of the efforts that you are helping out with are paying off and it is saving a lot of our residents money, so thank you all very much.
Very good.
And the last announcement I have is that we did receive the population estimate from the Bureau of, the University of Florida Bureau of Economic and Business Research. They are stating that our preliminary population estimate is 54,862. We'll be forwarding that document to you. That is a slight decrease from last year's estimate of around 600, almost 600 persons. And we, we remain with six in our inmate population as well. So we'll forward this to you for your information. This is the inmate? We have six inmates population. This is the population that is used by the state of Florida when we apply for grants. It's also implemented within your comprehensive plan, so it's a requirement that we maintain this record.
Okay. Now Fred, you got a nice report for us?
A nice report?
Or a report, I heard you were, you were nice enough to go to that meeting.
Well, actually, I was, it was nice that also the, Arlene and Matt went too. Basically, the people that were there were advocating that very, all the cities work together and all that. They're going to have a meeting where they're going to show up at the, what do you call it, the charter review committee to talk about this. Now, in all honesty, what this is about is annexation. And it really doesn't affect us because we do not have any large parcels, even relatively small parcels, be annexed into the city. They're pretty well used up. There may be a 10 acre parcel here and a five there, but I don't think it would bother anybody about that. So the question is, they want every city to be represented at the charter review committee. So there's two questions. Number one, do I go? If I do go, do I reflect the position or I remain silent?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I've had a couple of discussions about this with the county and some of the other commissioners and I really flushed it out and just to be, so everybody understands what the deal is. Fred is right, this is about annexation, but this isn't really even about us, this is about Fort Myers. The end of the day, and I hate to put people's laundry out there, but I want it to be fully transparent so we all understand. Fort Myers ends up annexing, you know, properties, they rezone them and then they don't have water. So then, then it's on the county, so the county gets mad with Fort Myers, so they, they attempt to do something like, they talk to their city, their county attorney and say, hey, what would be an ideal way to fix this, right? And this would be an ideal way. If this were to happen, it would be a lot easier. But the problem is this, it is, from our standpoint, it's a bad deal because we're giving our autonomy to the county. And Fred, you are correct, there's not a lot of places where that can happen here, but from a policy perspective, if we were to bring it home, think about the DRGR mines deal. Instead of 750 homes, we would have had over 1,400. We would have lost our autonomy in regards to North and South Route from Astero to Collier and the impact fees wouldn't have been ours, they would have been the county's. So for us, it would have been a horrible deal. And if this were in place then, that's how it would have happened because we are giving the final say. We're taking the final say away from ourselves and giving it to the county. So there's no reason, I, I don't know why any of the cities would, but from my discussion, I am to understand that there may be other cities who are going to put in letters that are pretty much just going to oppose it and then not even go to the meeting. Some may go to the meeting and oppose it, but I think I would be, you know, I would be of mind that if you all were amenable and agreed to it, that we should do a letter in opposition and then just simply not go.
I agree with that. Make a motion.
Okay. I can't second, oh, I'll second it.
Is there a motion that's needed or is it just?
Yeah, we need, whatever we're going to do, we need a motion, yeah.
Okay, so, so the motion would, he said the motion, I'll second the motion.
Can, a question, can we just not go and not send a letter? Or do we need to do a letter?
Anything you want to do.
We could do.
What would be staff's recommendation?
Well, this is, this would be a policy decision of the council of how you feel about the, the position. And if you don't.
It's about home rule.
Living in Lee County for 45 years, I don't trust, is that the word? I, we've been a, a pimple on a football player's ass all our lives down here in Benita. So we became a city so we could have some, some, some power of ourselves. And Lee County would take anything they can get. So I agree with Jesse. That's my motion. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, Council, if you recall at the last meeting, my, my concern was that any, any change that takes away power from the cities at, in the county charter would is a loss of rights for the city. I, I agree for the most part that when looking at the language as it's currently proposed, it probably is not going to affect the city. It definitely doesn't affect us with regards to utilities, maybe some annexations out east with respect to roads, but the, the real concern is that the next charter review, will the charter review be asking for authority to control and use decisions? Which, if they add that to their charter, they can, they can override the city. So my recommendation is, if the recommendation is to recommend against it, is to do it just on the basis of home rule and nothing more.
Perfect.
I'm good with that.
Ready for a vote?
So does he have to change anything?
Mayor, do, do you agree with that, that sentiment? Okay.
Councilmember Pardon. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes. Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Very good, folks.
Staff will draft a letter for the mayor's signature, will circulate it first based on the objection of overall of home rule. And is that understanding is that council member, I mean Deputy Mayor Forbes is not attending the meeting?
Thank you, Fred. Nigel, do you have anything tonight?
Oh, well, I'm leaving this and headed to Orlando for the governor's TDC conference. Looking forward to that, see what kind of money we can generate and then not forget that we've got hoteliers and business people that there's some opportunities.
Does any of that money come back to Benita?
That's, that's, that's a whole lot.
We don't have a whole lot of hotels, we're getting more.
Well, some of the, what's happening downtown, which is amazing, I, I'd actually, if I need to get in a good mood, I drive downtown right now. So what the face of our city will look like in about a year and a half is going to be something else. Making people aware of that, making it a destination, probably going to help our traffic too a little bit. But, yeah, that's.
Yeah, we got the Fairfield, that's new. I know the Hampton Inn's filled every night of the week and that's where I'm living, in hotel room. Yes, Fred?
Well, I, I need to bring up some, one little point, it'll take about a minute. On Tuesday, I had the opportunity to go to a meeting presentation by Rick Scott. And in that, he said that he was taking it on himself to be the push in the Senate to try and get that proclamation straightened out. It's got people where if you had a loss, you can't file it right on your income tax. And he's, and he, he also complimented Byron Donalds, our congressman, that he's taken the lead more or less in Congress, so you got a team working for you. So you got a team working for him.
Very good, I like that, man. Yes?
I was going to say, the other thing, I had the opportunity to meet with our new speaker, Sam Garrison, who's a gentleman and a pretty imposing individual. If you remember, I brought up a few months ago about the fact that there were five major insurance companies, that new insurance companies coming into Florida. Three of them have already been approved. So that's good news for us as consumers, it's good news for our citizens, and the rating that we just got is really important. John, thank you. Because I don't think insurance rates are necessarily going to go down, but if they plateau out, we'll all be thrilled.
Okay. Jamie, you got anything tonight?
No, I don't.
How about Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to let people know that I've asked John and Community Development to take a look at some language that we may want to adopt in one of the coming meetings dealing with the ability of businesses and other organizations to provide transient housing to their employees. Right now, we have a situation under our housing ordinance or comprehensive plan that basically says that, you know, if you're operating something that's, looks like a dormitory, you can't really do it unless you're an actual college or university. And there's businesses and organizations in town that would like to provide housing for people that are coming in and working for six months, something like that. And so I've asked John to take a look at the language on that. And I know that there's going to be a request coming in in October by one of those organizations to do that. See if we can go along with providing that. What it does, it, it, it's part of the focus on work local, live local, but it also pulls some people into what they actually need as far as housing away from other affordable housing that's used, can be used by families and so forth in the rest of Benita Springs and the county. So it's, the people that's impacting, that would be using this housing are typically young, trained professionals, and they're only here for a short period of time. So.
Any idea where that would be, just out of curiosity?
I'm sorry?
Any idea geographically where that would be? Like in Benita Bay, are we talking?
Well, there's a sales center, the old sales center in Benita Bay is, is available to, to be used in that way because-
Coming up, we probably don't want to get too much into the details of that.
Okay.
Quickly, but-
I think it'd be fun.
Just to answer the, the question and not to take the microphone away, but I think that what we're looking at doing is something that started in other places that I think that we start to have companies and businesses large enough to take advantage of it, where they're not wanting their employees to drive either from Cape Coral or Lehigh and live either onsite or close to the premises where they work, which if, if done correctly reduces traffic, makes everybody's life a little bit easier, and actually turns out to be a good thing. If done poorly, it's done poorly and there's a lot of problems. So that, when we're crafting this, we'll obviously try to stay on the right side of the street, but that's kind of what we're looking at right now. So without going into too much detail, because you will be hearing an appeal coming up in October, the general idea for the process is that you would allow that as part of a write-by code.
Okay.
Okay, let's see. Jesse, you got more for us tonight?
Just two quick things. I just wanted to briefly discuss the property with the old sheriff station, we called the Banyan Tree property. You know, if you recall, as we left this issue, you know, when we all went over it, DPZ did, did three renderings of how we could maximize the property. I'd just like to set course to, to try to get this property in a forward-moving direction. Like, so if staff could look into some of the options and how we could facilitate moving that conversation forward. I know we've been given a few thoughts on, on it, and that would potentially look kind of like a hybrid of the options, like a parking with the splash pad and an open-air building, something along those lines. But whatever that looks like, you know, I want to get us in, in a position to have it teed up so we can finally have that conversation, get it moving. And the whole point for, for this is, I would like this to be ready for our 25th anniversary. And I know that's ambitious and timetable-wise might be hard, but with the 25th anniversary and all the other great things we're doing downtown, that tree and that little area is just such a huge part of it. So when we, in my mind, when we said, hey, we're going to get the downtown, this kind of went without saying, like this is like kind of the heart of it. So just kind of get that ball rolling. So I'd ask staff to kind of look into that, please, and how we could get rolling with that. And then last, a shout-out to Turtle Time. I was able to release 24 larger head turtles last week on the beach off of Beach Access 10 with, with them and one of the head turtleers. It was really nice to see our ordinance in real life. So if you haven't been down to the beach since we've passed the ordinance, past sunset, if you go down there and then you look at the entire beach, the whole thing is dark and it's just really kind of beautiful. They've got the really low resolute lights, some of them up there, but just seeing it all, it's a, it is picturesque, to say the least. That's all I've got.
Matt, you were going to say parking lot, is, the Banyan Tree, that's been dead and ready to roll?
Well, it's, it's well under construction. It's, they started, when did I tell you? They think they started the first week of August. And yeah, that's about right. And they're pretty well along on it right now.
It looks really good.
Looks good.
It looks really good inside, too.
That's good. And that, what is that one that, that's got the big poles of? What is that? Anybody know what that is?
Extra Sugar Shack?
Sugar Shack?
Yep.
Isn't that a big roof or what are they building there, John?
I think it's a big deck, right?
Here comes John.
I think it's a big deck.
I, I, you know, I build a lot of things, but I got 20 feet up in the air with these poles.
The Sugar Shack's going to have shade structures. So those are going to be places that they'll have areas for entertainment and also for congregating outside.
I, I see the trees are still there.
Yes, sir.
They're not taking the trees out.
I think they trimmed as much as they're planning on trimming with the trees. I drove by there yesterday and I believe that's as far as they were going with those.
They're going to put canopy in there?
Canopies and, and some, some roof structures, so.
Maybe Seminole Indians will come in and do that.
I don't think on this one, sir, but other projects, yes.
John's the appropriate word, pergola. Big pergolas.
I think that might be a little too ambitious for what they're doing, but we can use it here.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, John. Here we are, up to Laura Carr. What do you got, Laura?
Well, thank you for remembering me. Actually, I have a favor to ask of the council to watch the May, the August 15th zoning meeting. Because at the next council meeting, I'm going to bring some issues up. And I've talked to John and I'm meeting with Arlene and Matt on Friday. I know Matt's surprised, but, and just watch. It took 20 minutes to select someone to run the meeting, and it was bizarre. It was so unprofessional, it went so off the road. Now, oh, Jackie left, but Jackie was fabulous and Ms. Alex Crisp-
Ms. Crespo.
Crespo. I love her. But she, she was also true, really, if you want to know what London Bay, AKA Bayview, AKA the Ritz Carlton Residence on Astero Bay, AKA Salt Leaf, Salt Leaf Village, they made a fabulous presentation. However, the board, the council that will, the, the zoning board did not do their homework. They did not know what was going on, and I think we need to make some changes. And so I'm going to discuss it with staff and come up with some changes that might mean even combining zoning with LPA. And so that's where I'm going, and it's something that makes a whole lot of sense, would make life easier for community development, make it easier life for staff. But we'll see how you guys feel when it's all presented in the green sheet.
My understanding is they didn't get any information till like the night before the meeting. So that was a big packet of information that they didn't have a chance to read, to go through.
Nope.
Several days before.
That's all right.
Several.
By the way, you know, they voted four to two. That's their right to vote, you know, they have their opinion, and that's what they're there for.
It was the conduct, I'm saying, the conduct of the zoning board, there were only four people. Our chairperson was not there and our vice chair was by Zoom. And there was some disingenuous behavior going on or, or lackadaisical, I have no idea. But watch it yourselves and figure out how you feel about. It was absolutely bizarre. That's all I'm going to say. You watch it for yourselves. If you disagree, you disagree. But combining the two committees makes a whole lot of sense, and there is a way to do it. So that's all I have.
Okay. Everybody got a chance? Yes. Amy, you didn't have any?
Wait.
Mr. Mayor, I just had one real quick thing that came up during the meeting. We just finalized the time and date for mediation. We're scheduled to go to trial on the three hard-working Americans. That starts in October. We have a final mediation date on September 22nd. Councilman Corey will be attending as he was at the arbitration.
Just like the last time coming in?
It's going to be, yes, it'll be all Zoom.
Yeah, Zoom in. Okay.
Just want to let you guys know that that was coming.
All kinds of-
Are the rest of us going to have to do anything again or no?
Can we zoom in too and just be quiet?
I don't think that'd probably be a good idea. But we'll, if there's a, if there's a mediated solution before the trial, we'll, we'll have the first one.
Yeah, Derek, when I talked to Jane yesterday about that, I think it was yesterday, she didn't have a time for this thing to start.
Looks like we're going to start at 9:00 AM.
Nine o'clock, okay. Okay, public comment? I guess we're ready for public comment. All right. You got nothing? Come on, we don't want to go home already. We're adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Arlene?